And welcome to the November 6, 2018 Millis School Committee meeting. My name is Steven Kettlelon, I'm the chairperson. I'm going to start with a roll call. Kerry Roach, secretary. Robin Briggs.
Here.
Mark Conroy. Denise Gibbons. Teacher rep Bernadette Lindgren. Student rep Dorie Stefanowitz. And the superintendent Nancy Gufferson.
Here.
Okay. I'd like, before we go any further, I want to announce that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meetings, all meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under School Committee and all times are approximate on the agenda. Prior to open session, the School Committee met an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Millis teachers and clerical, the clerical unions. Open session. Jody, has anyone signed in for open session?
There isn't.
There isn't, okay. Action items, they're quick so we can move quick. The first action item is the consideration to approve the 10/23/2018 School Committee meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion to approve the October 23, 2018 School Committee meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
A motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next action item is the consideration to reduce fees to Buddy Bowl on November 17th and 18th. In your packet is a waiver, this is a waiver that we have done for the last four or five years and maybe even longer. Buddy Bowl is a two-day flag football fundraiser and Mr. Fagan has requested this in the past. Most of the activities are on town fields, so the only thing that they're looking for is a, is it a full waiver of-
Yes.
-of the use of our facilities, the cafeterias.
And the bathrooms.
And the bathrooms. So the one thing, as everyone knows, we do not waive custodial fees, especially on the weekends because we actually have to have someone here to do the work. So we would be waiving the facility rental fee for the cafeteria and the bathrooms, but we would be charging for the custodial. So if anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I move that we approve the request to waive the fees for Buddy Bowl on Saturday, November 17th and Sunday, November 18th, exclusive of custodial fees.
Second.
Motion been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Last action item is the consideration to approve the auditorium seating contract.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Discusses.
So Mr. Wigan and Mr. Engler have worked on this project, so they'll come up and explain the three bids we received and make their recommendation on the auditorium seating replacement.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. You have a memo for you that basically has a table that outlines the three bids. I would say we were very pleased with the results. We frankly thought we were going to see bids in $120,000 range. The low bid that we're recommending this evening is from the Robert H. Lord Company. The seating bid is $89,012. There was an alternate in the bid for the removal of the seating, we weren't sure we were going to be able to afford that. The alternate with this bid was $9,800 for removal of the seating. We're recommending that you approve both of these, the actual seating replacement and the alternate for removal.
Okay, before we, before we approve, when do, when do we think the work could begin?
It's in your motion, but it was in the bid as well. It has to be completed by April 1st.
Okay, I'm sorry, I see that, okay. So, so we will have it from a town meeting?
Yes.
We sat in that auditorium last night talking about zoning-
I could count-
-zoning for marijuana in this town, so it was a long meeting, so-
I could count the votes by the squeaks of the chairs when you sat down.
You were there. Does anyone, before we make a motion, does anyone have any questions about the bid, about the project? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I make a motion to approve the bid for the replacement and removal of auditorium seating for Robert H. Lord Company in the total price of $98,812.
Motion been moved and seconded. So should we, do you want us, is that an exact, or you want us to go up to $100,000? Is it, or is that, is that going to be okay, the $98,000?
No, we'll work with that. The, the motion I put before you broken into two parts, but I think that'll work.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should've read right from it.
No, we can-
Okay, do you want me to redo it? I can read your motion exactly. I, I'm staring at it, I should've known.
Do we have to, do we have to rescind that motion?
You might want to do that only because that also gets the date in there as well.
Okay. All right, can I rescind that?
Denise is going to amend her motion.
I'm gonna-
Denise, thank you, Mark.
I'm gonna make a motion to amend my previous motion.
Okay.
So I'm gonna move that the Millis School Committee award the project to replace the Millis Middle High School auditorium seating to the Robert H. Lord Co. in an amount not to exceed $89,012. Further, to award the auditorium seating removal to the Robert H. Lord Co. in an amount not to exceed $9,800. This project shall be completed by April 1st, 2019. That's exactly as Terry has it. Sorry, Jody.
A motion been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student reps.
College visits continue daily during the students' lunch periods. Applications to receive a scholarship between $500 and $16,000 are being accepted. This scholarship is on behalf of union and labor councils throughout the state, and all seniors in the high school are eligible to receive this scholarship. Winter sports are beginning. It is announced in the mornings when the meetings will be held, and parent conferences are this week on a Thursday night, and students will have a happy day.
Okay, thank you. Teacher reps.
Veterans Day will be celebrated next Monday, November 12th, so schools are closed. The inaugural Millis Athletics Fall of Fame class will be inducted on Saturday, November 24th, 6:00 PM at the Medway VFW. There's a half day for teacher conferences on Wednesday, K through 8, so that's Clyde Brown and the middle school, and then for all schools, including the high school, on Thursday. And, actually, I think Thursday is November 8th and Wednesday is November 7th, excuse me. The evening parent teacher conferences at the high school will be held on November 15th. There is Band-Aid at Gillette Stadium this Saturday, November 10th, and the school play Alter Ego will be showing next weekend, the 16th and 17th. And by this Friday, Mrs. Dino's advisory is looking for fall and winter clothing for teens, and any items will be donated to the Medway Family Shelter. So things can be dropped off at the office or sent to the library to Mrs. Dino. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, I want to take something, I want to go a little out of order because we do have an award and we have a guest in the audience, so superintendent's report is the NSDEC award.
Mm-hmm. I am very pleased this evening to ask Kwaku Ashiagmore to, and his mother, to come on We are honoring Kwaku tonight for the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning. Kwaku has increased throughout his coursework each year in Millis High School. He has increased the rigor of his coursework, has excelled in a range of college prep honors and AP classes. Outside of the classroom, Kwaku has been a leader among his classmates and a contributing member of the community. Kwaku has worked to influence important decisions for the entire student body as a representative on the Student Council Executive Board throughout his high school years, and he is currently the co-president of the Class of 2019 Student Council. Last year Kwaku was one of the students chosen by teachers to be a student representative of the Game Change Program where he was trained as a mentor in our Violence Prevention Program through Northeastern University. Kwaku would never miss an opportunity to give back, and he spends a great deal of his spare time volunteering, teaching, and mentoring young students. He volunteers as a recreational basketball coach, he teaches drum lessons and piano lessons for younger kids, and he leads a youth group for his church, which requires him to lead meetings, organize group outings, and help out with a weekly clothing drive. Every weekday Kwaku works after school as an educational aide in the Elementary Extended Day Program. This past spring Kwaku was an easy selection for the Millis chapter of the National Honor Society, given his commitment to academics, his leadership skills, his exemplary character, and his commitment to the community. Kwaku embodies the qualities that make up the NSDC award. Their accomplishments, or his accomplishments and contributions deserve special recognition as he has been an exceptional student leader and positive role model at Millis High School. Congratulations, Kwaku.
Welcome, girl, you're welcome.
We have a certificate for you and the members of the School Committee to congratulate you. And then we'll take-
Congratulations.
And then we'll take pictures.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're gonna come around and take a picture.
I'll take a picture. Yeah. So first we'll do one with me, and then we'll have everybody in here. Okay. Two, one, two, three, and again, one more time. Okay, school committee?
Yep, school committee. And mom?
And we'll take, she can, she can.
Yes. Thank you.
I'm gonna have to sto- school committee, people.
All right.
Okay, one, two, three. All right, this is mom's camera, I need to do mine because I have to use it to post it on the website. And Nancy wants one, everybody wants one, hang on.
We'll get it tweeted out.
All right, guys. Don't go anywhere. I feel like a proud mother. One, two, three, and two, and one more time. All good, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations to you.
You're welcome. I answered.
Thank you.
Next is time and learning, and we have two, two presentations, one's the middle school school improvement plan and one is the Clyde Brown school improvement plan. I'd like to decide.
Well, we started with high school, so we'll go to middle school, and-
Save the best for last.
Right, and round out the evening with elementary.
Good evening.
No, don't stand for that, Maureen. They're all the best. I didn't mean that to sound so mean. Oh, good.
Thank you for having me here to talk about the middle school, about where we are, where we're going, and how we're gonna get there. This is our last fifth grade class to go through Millis Middle School. Very sad, not gonna lie. But I put them there because it reminds me that we are here doing what we do in service of children. They're bigger and they're more important than we are. When I think about where we are, I think about some highlights from last year, and I can't ignore elements of our culture. The sports and the clubs that we have and the sense of belonging that they bring to children, self-discipline, character building in sports. When I think of students who approached me at the beginning of the year about having a bike club on weekends, and when I put it out to teachers, I had at least three who said, "Sure, I'll go out at 7:30 on Sunday morning and bike with students," and they have it every weekend since then. Our talent show, that sometimes brings out the most surprising opportunities to shine in our students, events and activities, community service, they're all planned by students. We have Pink Shirt Day, Relay for Life, UBU Day, and countless other things planned by Student Council and Leadership. And the kids take the lead in that, teachers don't plan them. And finally, although it was not a highlight in the true sense of the word, the student walkout for school safety last year, I think was testimony to our students' ability to organize, to rally, to talk about important and sensitive topics, and to use their voices in a positive way. I was proud of them. Our culture will continue to build on it. Is it perfect? No, but are we working towards that all the time? Yes. I think also last year we began to focus a little bit more on coding and integrating science, technology, engineering, mathematics, doing more interdisciplinary work. Certainly, we thank Merit for their support and their initiatives in supporting the Sphero bots and some of the coding and other initiatives relative to STEAM, and we'll continue to grow in this area because it's one that students are engaged in, they're motivated, and I think it's, it's where we need to build our programs. So, in planning this year, I took a look back at school improvements, that plans that came before us, and we are always involved in adaptive change. And that means a change in mindset, and that means new learning for teachers. All of these areas, even if I don't specifically mention them, are still evolving in our current school improvement plan as we work through this whole change process. It's required us to think about education in a different way, and I say since 2001 because that's how long I've been here, and these are the things that I have seen come onto our plate as new initiatives. I remember the day when Power School came to us and we had to do online grading, and what a shift that was for us. I applaud the teachers for their tenacity in continually working in an environment of change, because whenever we ask people to change, there's a sense of loss and a sense of grief over certain things. There's history and tradition, there's a little bit of the loss of confidence and sense of competence because familiar routines and structures are, are changing. And so when we used to know exactly what we were doing and how we were doing it, now we're a little sometimes uncertain as we, as we move forward. So again, these things are involved or inherent in this school improvement plan too, even if I don't directly mention them. So where are we? You have our school report card, I believe, in front of you? Or in your packets? Right? With the green and the yellows. So if we analyze the data for the results of state mandated testing, then I think the middle school is in a very good place. On a test that was advertised to be more rigorous, to test higher level thinking skills and compounded by the first time our students took them online, we did quite well. Last meeting here, Joan, I think, presented a comprehensive overview of MCAS reports. And the middle school percentages of students meeting and exceeding expectations in both math and ELA, as a whole, were 10% above the state. Something to celebrate if we consider that 5% is a benchmark as an area of strength. If we dig a little deeper on the report card that you have in front of you, some of the facts. Oops, I'm doing on too soon. In ELA, the percentage of students meeting and achieving expectations were between 1 and 22% above the state. In math, at all grade levels, the percent of meeting and achieving was 10% or higher above the state level. All of our average student growth percentiles were within or above the expected 40 to 60% range, which indicates one year's growth. And the middle school met the state targets for improvement in achievement and growth last year when looking at our lowest performing group of students and our high need subgroups. Some specific areas of improvement that are not on the chart that you had, the, in fifth grade, ELA, the percent meeting and exceeding rose from 37% in 2017 to 63%. The fifth grade math rose from 48% to 67% meeting and exceeding. Seventh grade ELA rose from 53 to 68% meeting and exceeding. In English Language Arts, fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade all increased the number of, or the percentage of students in the exceeding expectations category. Fifth grade from 0 to 3%, sixth grade from 6 to 12%, and seventh grade from 2 to 16%. In ELA, student growth percentiles, all of our average student growth percentiles increased from the year before, especially in fifth grade, from 30 to 44%. And in math, student growth percentiles in fifth and sixth grade, that also increased. So clearly, we saw, I think, a significant amount of improvement. It's encouraging that what we're doing is working, and we need to continue doing more of it to maintain this trend. Again, I do commend the teachers for additional learning they had to do to administer the online tests last year and to make sure our students were comfortable with that. We were nervous that was going to impact the results, but I don't think that it did. Not to mention making sure they had the opportunity to learn the skills and concepts necessary to be successful. Although we prefer to compare ourselves to ourselves and not other people, you might be interested to know how we compare to the DART schools, the middle school DARTs. They are different from the district DART schools. They're in your packet, you can maybe see them a little bit better, but red is Millis and black is the state. The blue represents the other schools from the DART list. So in ELA for achievement, we were above the state level and, and competitive with the DART schools. In math, again, we were above the state level and very competitive with the DART schools, especially if you look at sixth grade and eighth grade. First student growth percentiles in ELA, we showed strengths, I believe, in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and we were still within the expected 40 to 60% range in fifth grade, although a little bit closer to the state average. And in math, again, within the expected range for fifth grade, but quite strong in seventh grade and eighth grade compared to the other DART schools. So that gives us a sense of where are we. So where are we going? Basically, we want to ensure that every student demonstrates one year's growth. We want to meet them where they are and bring them forward and help them make progress. We want to help students achieve mastery of standards in the core content areas, and we need to focus on how students are exceeding expectations and what we need to do to help those who are ready for more challenge. We will be focusing on, ongoing focus writing across the curriculum, and how do we teach students to use claims and evidence in their writing and back up their statements with data in math and science? So it's a, it's an interdisciplinary, cross-curricular goal. And I believe Joan talked to you about science, but the science standards changed, the MCAS test changed, and so we need to make sure that we're closely aligned with the new next generation standards and allowing students multiple opportunities to learn and revisit concepts between sixth and eighth grade by the time they take the eighth grade test. So we'll be looking closely at science and what we're doing in science. So how do we do this? How do we target areas for improvement? Our teachers meet regularly in professional learning communities, and it's invaluable work. The beginning of the year, they analyze all available data, from standardized testing to student work to observations of teachers. They set goals and they write their own action plans. This year, their goals include continuing work in reading and writing across the curriculum, vocabulary in all content areas, and that includes Spanish. They're also doing reading and comprehension skills and writing in Spanish. And in math and science, problem solving and how to use data to support their conclusions. We need to help students understand why they're learning what they're learning, provide models and exemplars of mastery, and help them understand, "How do I know when I've got it and I've learned it?" And so part of our action plan includes continuing to build our tiers of support. This is designed to help all students make one year's growth, to meet them again where they're at. So we try to reach at least 85% of them with preventative measures at tier one. About 10% of the students with strategic intervention at tier two, and about 5% in terms of crisis or intention, intensive need management at tier three. And so as students receive support at various levels, the, the amount of intensity and frequency of services increases as they move. I'm not going to go through all of that, there's probably more, but you can see that it's a structured system that we have in place, and we try to make sure that the bulk of our focus is at tier one because all students deserve to have a solid curriculum in the classroom. I do want to talk a little bit about the impact of our interventions last year. We did analyze data on specific target students. Our tiers interventionists are only part-time. So what we found was what we were doing was definitely working. Unfortunately, the budget's limited, so they don't have the opportunity maybe to work with as many students in depth as we would like. They did work with others. This is only reporting students who were specifically part of intervention for a full year and, and really got targeted direct instruction. So in reading, and this actually started later in the year, it did not start last September, but the students that we targeted, 68% showed at least one year's growth and 41% more than that, some as high as 80 and 90% on the MCAS. This is, they moved categories, and in math, a similar results, even stronger, I think. So again, I think that our process is working and we're hoping to expand it if we can, assuming that we can work that into our, our budget next year. Our tiers of support also include a level of challenge, and it's something that we're looking at in depth. How do we challenge students? It's a variety of ways, from flexible grouping, often using technology to help us personalize to scale. Teachers are now, this year, learning how to, there's a new feature in its learning where they can develop personalized learning pathways for students so that children who can learn at different rates are able to do so or move on more quickly. Again, I applaud the tenacity of the teachers because gone are the days when we teach the whole class the same thing at the same time in the same way. So there's an awful lot of planning that goes on to designing impactful learning for students at all levels. We don't teach to the middle anymore. Another part of our tiers and another piece of adaptive challenge that we're in the midst of is social emotional learning. We put several programs in place to support a growing number of students with anxiety, school refusal, and depression in our school. We greatly benefited from some extra hours of a second school adjustment counselor last year. We're spending more and more time working with families of children with challenges than ever, and they don't confine, those challenges don't confine themselves to school, they spill over into home. We're addressing substance use and abuse, self-harm through prevention programs like the Signs of Suicide Program, ESPT, which is the screening for substance use, and we were given, awarded a grant from the state for Project- And we were given, awarded a grant from the state for project here that Derek Finney is implementing in his health program. We begun to increase our collaboration with the high school, which is fabulous, adopting a program called Let's Talk, which is about relationships amongst girls and body image. We're training high school girls to then work with small groups of middle school girls on this, setting up mentors and big sisters. We're very excited about the therapy dog who's going to be arriving soon. So from, for our school improvement plan, I'd say we are mostly focused on strengthening integration into the classroom at tier one level, into every classroom, and helping kids develop self-regulation and perspective-taking, that's a focus this year. Being able to put yourself in someone else's shoes and see things from a different perspective. We're focusing more on learner expectations that are on the report card and helping kids understand how their persistence pays off and how their sense of autonomy and self-regulation impacts their learning. So we continue to support voice and choice of learners through student-centered learning. We presented at the Highlander Institute last year on personalized learning and developing learner profiles. We try to find out what students need, and teachers provide options based on that data. We ask students about their strengths and challenges, we ask them to reflect on that, we ask them to take ownership by setting goals and monitoring their own progress. We want to help them understand who they are as a learner, so we're not always dictating what they do. They have some say, they have some agency, and they take ownership. And I think that when we look at, is what we're doing having an impact? There is a large meta-analysis study of student learning by John Hattie that's recently been updated, and there are certain things that have the greatest effect size on student achievement, and some of the things that we're doing are directly aligned to that. So targeted, laser-like focus on what students need and having a learner-centered approach, the interventions and the direct instruction that we're providing, the technology that allows us, again, to leverage personalized learning and developing ownership by helping kids set goals and developing learner profiles. This year, we're, all students will be creating digital portfolios that they'll be sharing with parents, I'll talk about that at the end, and putting together learning showcases where they have to evaluate their own work and reflect on it and present it to people. So that helps them to take ownership of their learning. In terms of maintaining a safe and supportive learning environment, again, we're going to focus on social emotional learning. We're focusing on school safety and implementing regular safety drills, so they will be as regular as fire drills to students. We are talking about community building and things like diversity and equity and bias, and how do we create a better, accepting, and inclusive environment where every student feels like they belong? Social media, digital citizenship is all part of that, and of course, planning for 2020 when it's, when we become a six through eight building, and what kind of impact is that going to have on us as a culture and some of the more operational things that we have to decide on, right? In terms of family and community engagement, in the past, we've always talked about improving and increasing our communication, but I think we need to target it to communication about student learning. We've talked to this as a staff about the best ways to do that. Digital portfolios is one way. Having learning showcases and inviting parents in more is another way. We've talked, we are in the midst of talking about feedback that we give to students to increase and improve their learning. Power school and report cards as a tool for communication, because that's what they really are, communication as to where is a student at a certain point in time. Technology sometimes frustrates us because it doesn't do what we want it to do in the best way that we want it to, so we're still looking, we're still working on that. So to that end, we're soliciting input from all stakeholders. We're listening to what people have to say, and we invite those opinions. We've conducted a parent survey and also a student survey so far, and the student survey is because we keep telling them we value their voice and we want to hear student voice. So we're listening to students as well as, you know, part of information gathering. So we've moved from the dance floor to the balcony to take a more bird's eye view of what's going on, what we're doing, to get a sense of where we need to go, what adjustments we need to make. We're trying to do it thoughtfully as part of a reevaluation process of any adaptive change that we make. We know that we'll always have, you know, opinions on both sides of a fence, and, but we want to do what the right thing for children is. So that's an ongoing focus. And then finally, in professional culture and learning, the middle school could not have a more passionate, caring, forward-thinking group of teachers on staff. I'm proud to work with them. I share leadership with them and tell them all the time that I don't have all the answers and I don't want to make all the decisions. So we're building leadership capacity amongst teachers because there are many leaders on the staff. We're continuously talking about being lifelong learners and engaged in professional growth. The study I mentioned talks about the greatest impact on student achievement being teacher efficacy. If we believe as a staff that what we do impacts student learning, then that's going to make the most difference, and I believe that we do. We're more and more building collaborative expertise, more and more doing interdisciplinary work, co-teaching, teachers observing teachers, talking about what works, what doesn't work. The silos are coming down and the walls are coming down, and we're doing more than ever in terms of sharing expertise, which makes us stronger, I think. And this year, teachers are involved in what we're calling passion professional development projects, so things that they're interested in learning about, things that will impact their classrooms. It's a culture of service and growth and communal success, and I think that we push through challenges together and we celebrate together. So just some highlights of what's coming in this year. So we have a little bit of a focus on project-based learning, and you probably have heard about the plastic pollution project that's going on in sixth grade and fifth grade as well. There was a little video that was made describing one of the projects, so I'm going to play that for you. There's a little background noise, but I think, I'm hoping that you can hear it. So that just gives you an idea of the first sort of project that they talked about. But at all levels, teachers are doing things that are, that have global connections and help to get Milis children out of Milis. We had a sixth grade teacher who did a Google Hangout with her son's class in the Bronx, and they interviewed each other about immigration. The fifth grade is participating in the Global Read Aloud, so they're reading a book called Amal Unbound, and I think there are thousands of schools across the world that are also reading that book, and they're connecting with classrooms in other places about that. Seventh grade has a plan to reach out and connect perhaps with a school in England. It's Mr. Howden's sister's school. So, and Spanish as well, is trying to find a sister school through Javier Perez, I believe. So we're looking outside of Milis more than we ever have. Our science fair night is now going to become a STEM night, so students are, we're evolving into a STEM project rather than just the traditional science fair. We're doing lots more interdisciplinary learning. Coding is, what I see students doing in the technology unified arts class in terms of coding is just amazing. They've moved, and I don't even know the right terminology for it, but the Sphere Robots that Merit donated to us, they're using in an even bigger way this year. And we are attempting to focus more on community service and how can we impact the world around us and learner showcases and digital portfolios. Finally, we did have the Commissioner of Education, Jeffrey Riley, visit, and when we greeted him in the library, we showed, we created this little video to give him a sense of the spirit of the middle school, so I thought I would treat you to that. That's it. Any questions?
I have an unsullied question for you, but maybe for something that you brought up about the TSS, the tiers of support, in that you didn't have the adequate amount of staff to do that. So one thing that we are doing as a committee is we're looking at budgeting differently this year. And the new business manager has been tasked with many, many things and this is just another new initiative for him to do. But we're looking at every school and we're looking at the current state, we're looking at the ideal state, and we're looking at the preferred state. We may never be able to get to the preferred state. We should, probably always can improve to an ideal state. So my question to you is, what is that support that you need? What are we talking, is it a full-time person? Is it a half-time? And has this been, and it may have been, yes, I apologize, has this been brought to our attention or maybe through the wish list? Has this been brought up?
I'm pretty sure since Andy's a totally set here, that a math specialist or reading specialist at the middle school has been on the wish list. We were able to use some creative, you know, means to have part-time people doing that work right now. Last year was the first time we had anyone with reading to do reading intervention. In math, we've had some support over the last couple of years that using tiers money, we've been able to do that.
So, so one thing that we have to do as a committee is that we may have to make more difficult decisions as we go because we can't just continue to say, we need this, but we can't fund it. If this is impacting learning, if this is impacting, it's a priority, it has to be a priority. If it's a priority for you, it has to be a priority for us and we have to try to figure out, how do we actually accomplish this? Instead of just saying, we've talked about it and I, now that we are talking about it, I do remember that this has come up several times. So we as a committee have to figure out, how do we get this funded? Because that's important. The tiers of support is an important program. So it's a, it's a comprehensive approach and it's not, it's not on you necessarily, but you, that, that is something that's going to come up is that, what do you need to learn? Not just what you're doing now or going forward. What's the ideal state? What would be a preferred state?
Appreciate that.
You guys good?
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My mic wasn't on. So well. Which ones is Nancy outside?
The three on the top, Nancy is outside.
Mark.
Hey, Judy? Did you get mine when I shared?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi. Hello.
Okay, this evening to present to you the School Improvement Plan for elementary. I know you have the paper, the hard copy version earlier. So what I'd like to do is to walk you through some of the highlights that we're hoping to accomplish this year. And I think it's important to begin with our accomplishments from last year. Some of the things that we are most proud of, that we accomplished last year, was the way that we worked together to reorganize the way data teams work. We evolved a model with the help of the SEL team that really helped us to take a look at data team as a group process. And by that I mean, rather, in the past, we had always worked to analyze math data and ELA data. It was kind of a linear process. This, beginning last year, we began a rotation model where teachers individually got to meet with the math specialist and then they rotated to meet with the reading specialist and then on to meet with the counseling staff. And then had an opportunity to kind of work based on the information and data that they had gotten to do some initial overall planning. We found that that model worked very well for teachers and that translated into great results for kids. And I'm excited to share with you some of the results of that later on in the presentation. We had content specialists really take a more active and hands-on role of teachers. And by that I mean, when we considered interventions for students in small group settings, the content specialist really became part of that team. They became an available resource that worked with specific teams or in some cases, individual teachers to do co-teaching in the classroom. Our, I think mindset for last year was, how do we recreate this model so that it best benefits all kids? And we found that collaboration is huge. The ability for teachers to work with content specialists in, in actualizing specific program strategies was huge. So that led to some really great instructional revisions for all teams at Clyde Brown. We're really excited that our steamer maker space opened last year. I have the utmost respect for the school council. They took this challenge and worked on it all year long. We were able to open the, the steam maker space in November, I believe, last year. And at that time, it was basically fostering more science-based thinking with students, having them approach problem solving from a perspective where they used different kinds of materials, recyclables. I'm proud to tell you that that's grown. The, the team of people that was part of the school council last year were able to work with the next generation science standards they created with input from teachers and with collaboration. One specific unit that incorporated science, technology, engineering, and math as well as literacy. They are so fired up to do this that they're beginning a second unit this year. They're volunteering to come and model for teachers when need be. So it's a great partnership. We're really excited about that part of the school plan, the work we did last year. We also did add a social emotional learning piece to the tiered systems of support. Maureen had spoken about it at length during her presentation. And at Clyde Brown, what it looked like for us was recognizing that for our whole school model, we use PBIS. We've used it for a number of years. It's really effective in, in teaching all kids cultural commonalities and helping them to understand big picture ideas of working socially within a community. We were also able to add numbers of small group focused interventions for kids that needed it as well as create more individualized social emotional supports for students. And what was unique about last year was that for the first time, we began to use a data screen instrument. In the past, it was basically just based on observation, you know, which kids seemed to need the help. But we find that by benchmarking kids in the fall, in the winter, and in the spring, we're able to know exactly which kids can benefit from particular types of supports. And that's, you know, we all have children and we all understand that development is, it's a process. And, you know, things that might not be on the radar in the fall may appear in the wintertime, but we're just really glad to be able to have a support for all students that are building. Last year, one of Michael's was to work on having a social media presence for Clyde Brown. It was a hard look for me in the sense that I personally don't have a Facebook page. I'm not really on social media, but in the more conversations I had with parents out at Spring Street in the morning, that's really important to them. That's how they get their news and information. And, you know, it was a goal last year to develop a school Facebook page and to use that to communicate out. People really seem to like it and it's not so hard. Of course, it's not so hard to keep up to date. So I learned a lot in the process as well and the, the school community benefited in the long run as well. Last year, we piloted our personalized learning lab classroom. We piloted a model where was a multi-age classroom comprised of eleven third graders and eleven fourth graders with an amazing teacher who is highly skilled in personalized learning practice. At the end of that year, we sat down to reevaluate it and my huge question is, how can we replicate this? If we can't replicate the model of, you know, a multi-age, you know, grouping of students, how do we take those practices and begin to move them forward? So that becomes part of the work that we're doing this year in our school improvement For this year, we're going to continue, we recognize that we have a lot of strong supports for children who need support. We need to do more for the children who need a challenge. So that is our focus, beginning the first day of school this year. We've met together as faculty, we've talked about what can we do within the structures that we have set up already, within the, you know, the models that we use to, to teach students in small groups? How can we find ways to challenge the kids who need that challenge? You know, the kids who master, we find when we pre-assess them, have mastered it immediately. How do we move them forward? And we're looking at that in a number of different ways. We're beginning with math, based on last year's data. That's an area that of the two, we need to, to work more on. So for me, it felt like a natural beginning place. And what we're doing is, based on what we've learned about collaborative practices in sharing instruction, we're now intentionally beginning to plan activities and projects to, you know, challenge the students in math who need that challenge. We learned a lot from previous years when we had fourth graders doing passion projects through Genius Hour and, you know, listening to their enthusiasm and what they learned and it was inspiring. You know, we really were excited because of their excitement and we learned a lot from that experience. So we're using that model as a starting place to, to begin thinking about how we can personalize learning more for students in mathematics. Likewise, we are continuing to expand our literacy exposure through science, technology, engineering, and math. We've always, teachers have always done an exceptional job at linking literacy to problem solving. We're looking more to have that happen within the STEAM units that we're building. Kindergarten team blows me away with the things that they are doing through, through, through literacy that, you know, it's evolving literacy, how they engage children in learning and it's effortless. And they really serve as a model for the work that the rest of us can be doing this year. We want to continue to support collaborative instruction between special educators and general educators. That's one of the goals for Dr. Marks and the Student Support Services Department to really pull together a co-teaching model where we have groups of, you know, we note that general educators are highly skilled in content and special educators are highly skilled in accommodations. So what a great model it will be when we get those two groups of professionals together to plan instruction for children. Again, project-based learning is another way that we are, and we're not as far along in that as the middle school. We are at the beginning stages of project-based learning, but we're really encouraged by the work that we've done so far and we're looking to expand the ways that we do it. We're intentionally paying attention to the content, the curriculum pieces that are part of every, the learning at every grade level and finding more hands-on experiential ways to promote that. For social learning, emotional learning, one of the tasks we have this year is to align our Open Circle curriculum to the CASL standards. And I'm sorry, I don't recall what CASL stands for, it's an acronym that's, that deal, that, I think it's the Center for Advancement of Social Emotional Learning. Does that, did I get that right? Thank you. This is the golden standard that people use when they are looking at social emotional learning curriculum. And we're looking to take what we already do, use the data that we're getting from our, our benchmark surveys to see where we need to, you know, kind of beef up our curriculum and provide additional support. We are continuing to use learning data from iXL, Scooppad, and Freckle. This year, we're piloting iXL in kindergarten and grade one and we're piloting Freckle, which is another adapted learning platform, web-based product, so that we're able to create personalized learning pathways for all students. The nice thing about all these products is, you know, earlier we had spoken about the need to reinforce students in tier one plus who need a challenge. These adapted learning practices, a learning platform, programs allow for that, so that's part of the piece. We're also really excited to pilot our personalized student learning plans in math for all Clyde Brown students. Teachers are really excited in the sense that for us, it's a natural progression. We began with our student, our learning, learner profiles last year. We've gotten really good at analyzing data. This next piece really involves more of the, the students input into their learning. And we, one of the ways we gauge learning is through periodic conferences with students. So I'd like to think that when we talk about personalized student learning plans, it's a plan that's developed collaboratively by students and teachers, based on goal setting, based on an awareness of the areas of strength and the areas that you need to work on. These are shared with parents so that there's that partnership of home and school, periodic conferences. We're hoping to expand the types of conferences that we afford to parents later on this year. It's really important when we're, especially at the elementary level, when, when learning moves at such a quick pace and, and learning develops developmentally that we keep parents involved. So that's one of the things that we are hopefully going to actualize for this year as well. For standard two, management operations, I'll be honest with you, my, a, a, a good deal of the work that I'll be personally doing this year will focus on the opening of the new Clyde Brown. But within that brief statement, really, is, there's a lot of collaboration and a lot of opportunities for teacher leaderships. We're beginning to have conversations right now, it's just today, I had conversations with the fourth grade about look programming and learning in fourth grade. You know, right now, we run self-contained classrooms. It doesn't have to be that way. It can be whatever we'd like it to be. And it's kind of, it, it's funny, when I think about the conversation that I had with the fourth grade team, they're really excited about it in some ways, but really nervous about it in other ways. So to me, it feels like it's a balance of put all the ideas out there, let's brainstorm it, let's, let's figure out possibilities, and then let's get practical. You know, given the move, given the, the changes, what can we practically do to create the best possible programming in a 21st century school? So they're excited about it. I will be having the same conversations with fifth grade. I do have some kind of out-of-the-box thinking about possible collaboration between fourth and fifth grade teachers, particularly around passion projects. But again, that's part of the work that I need to do this year programmatically. We, I do believe, as Maureen does, in empowering teachers to be co-leaders and also to recognize when teachers are doing exemplary job promoting their work and helping them to feel confident in promoting their work as well because best practices need to be shared by everybody in, in a school. So that will be part of the work that we're doing this year in addition to all the, the scheduling types of things from, for example, we all, we all know about the Clyde Brown Spring Street parking lot and how that works. So for, for, for me this year, with the, with the help of other people, we, we need to take a look at strategic patterns so that when the school, the school opens, we have plans, they're all set to go, we're able to communicate out. It's a lot, but we're really looking forward to it. For standard three, family and community engagement, one of my own personal goals is to, as, as these conversations happen, as this work gets refined, to communicate out with the school community about our plans so that families feel brought along in the Part of the work that our school council will do this year is planning for the kind of emotional transition between the old Clyde Brown school and the new Clyde Brown building. And, you know, we're thinking about families and communities, this is the perfect group of people to do this. You know, they live in the, and I, I'm lucky to have an amazing group of people who signed on to do this work. So we're going to begin to look at things like how, you know, a walkthrough through the building. We, we had talked about, wouldn't it be great to put together a, you know, a video of Clyde Brown then and now? I mean, I have amazing artifacts in the Clyde Brown office from when the 1954 building opened, so it would be nice to include some of those. And at this point, we're in the idea stage, so I'm hoping to update you as we, you know, kind of move through, through the, this part of the project. But what's most important to me and to the community is that, you know, recognizing that generations of people went through the school and it's, it's going to be hard for some people. You know, for some people, it's an end and for a lot of us, it's a beginning and finding that balance so that we're all able to celebrate, you know, honor the past, but celebrate the For professional culture, I had mentioned the development of professional, of personalized student learning plans. There's an example on the slide that I guess really isn't too easy to see, but all of our student learning profiles have the same, some of the same components. They all have evidence of students giving their input about their, the way that they learn best. There are elements of goal setting around, in this case, it's math because we're working on math as a school. Areas they're good at, areas for growth. There's also an area for action planning. What steps will I take as a student to get better at my self-identified goals? What supports will I need? And there's going to be a part, a reflective piece for students as they conference with teachers so that they're able to actualize more their own learning processes. It's really important, they can do this work, they can. They do it in kindergarten and they've done it, you know, since I've been principal here with the tools to my program, it's, it's so rewarding to, to, to see that work kind of travel through our school. And I think that it really supports the work that the middle school is doing as they take it to the next level. You know, our hope is to have send along children in the middle school who, it, even though it's a change of building, it feels effortless in some ways. There are lots of recognizable components that are similar. I also wanted to talk a little bit about our school report cards. I know that's included, I think it's the last page in the school improvement plan. We have a lot to celebrate. We made some very nice gains in, in our, in growth this year. One of the things that I keep in mind is, or I kept in mind as I was putting this together was, we don't have a whole lot of similar data. We have two years' worth of data. Last year was the initial year and we have, this year's, or 2017 was the initial year, we have 2018's data. But, but I'm very encouraged and proud by the work that teachers are doing and students are doing to see that we are making some nice gains. Considering the test is brand new, considering that our third graders took it for the first time, considering that, that students have amazingly adjusted well to the online format, they, we are, we are in some places, you know, 10% plus 16% above the state level. I really think that's remarkable and I think it speaks to a number of things. I think it speaks to the support we give our students when they need it. I think it speaks to the innovation that teachers use every day in instruction. And I think it speaks to the, the dedication of our students. You know, they're not quires, they work hard, they set goals, they realize their goals. And what more could a principal ask for? I would like to draw your attention to the bottom of the page where one of the other indicators of success was the personalization of learning through tiered systems of support. In these scenarios, we looked at benchmark data from grade three and from grade four and we compared benchmarks in the fall and the spring to take a look at how effective were our systems of support in reaching students. And at the end of the day, in grade three, we had 60% of students at or above benchmark in the fall and 75% at or above in the spring, that's a gain of 15%. In math, 88% were at or above and 90% were at or above in, in grade three, a gain of 2%. And in social emotional behavioral, we had 20% of students fall into the advanced category and 25% in the spring. To me, that shows that the things that we're paying attention to are making the growth even though they might not be reflected in MCAS or other state testing. Likewise, for grade four in reading, they realized a 14% gain. In grade four math, an 8% gain fall to spring. And in social emotional behavioral, 3% gain in. And in social, emotional, behavioral, 3% gain in student scoring advanced. So again, you know, this is great data for us. To me, this says we need to continue what we're doing. We need to think about how we can help more children to reach those, those benchmarks that, that are indicators of success. The last thing that I'd like to take, I'd like you to kind of look at is I did kind of a mini-analysis of same cohort students scoring at meeting expectations plus. So in ELA, the students who in third grade 2017, they were at 44% meeting expectations or plus, or, or more. And in 2018, that rose to 69%. That's a gain of 25%. In math, students in third grades, 2017 scored 56%, meeting expectations plus. And in 2018, that rose to 61%, meeting expectations plus, a gain of 5%. So again, you know, we're certainly proud of these results, but it's an indication that we're trending in the right direction and we need to keep doing what we're doing and focusing on the things that we're focusing on. Any questions?
Jason, thank you for the presentation.
I have a question for you, my, in summary, kind of along the lines of what Steve had asked about the tiers interventionist. One of the things that I picked up on before Maureen presented is really elevating that need or that need to address how we challenge kids who are fast learners. It's been a bubbling topic over the last number of years that we, I'm not sure how well we've found a way to do it. But I guess it's one of these things, like the interventionist, what do we need to accomplish? And, you know, I think, my, I just haven't been around. I can't imagine there's a whole lot more we can do with staffing models, et cetera, that we haven't already tried. So is it more people, what, who are those? Who are those people and what do they need? What type of person is it? How do we make it work? Because it just seems like, to me, the only way we're going to get there is if we actually come up with tangible things of this is what we want, this is how we're going to get there. And most likely, it's not going to be the same people that are here because they're already doing a thousand other things. So as we go into the budget process for this year, and again, not just for the first school, also for the middle school and to the extent we did for the high school, what do we need to do to actually do it? And also, how are we going to know when it will be helpful?
And once again, you, you shouldn't edit, right? Because we're putting them in buckets. We're saying current, preferred, or a current, preferred, ideal, sorry. So we want everything and then we have to try to figure out what we do. And one thing that we are going to do is we're going to look back at all of the kind of the wish list that the administrators have put together and the superintendent has presented. And we're going to see what we've accomplished, what's left on the list, what, what we need to continue to do. Is that now no longer a need? And then, once again, we have to be more strategic because we can't have the administrators come in and say, over and over again, this is where we're at. We're going to have to make decisions on how do we get the extra resources or technology or FTEs so you can accomplish? You're already doing great things. How can we be even better? So that's, this is not a reflection on anything. This is just kind of the budget cycle. And when we asked you several years ago, what do you need? You say, a new building? And now we, we did what we could. You'll get that reading specialist eventually. And anything from you guys? I know that you've worked, you and Nancy and others in this room have worked very hard on that building. And I know that it's probably been more than all-consuming as you progress. So your, your work and your diligence and your, your passion for that building and Nancy is not lost on us. And thank you for doing it. You're wearing two hats this year. So we appreciate it and I look forward to seeing you in the new building next year.
Great, thank you. I think that one of the, when we're thinking about the budget, one of the things that teachers are really excited about is taking ownership for the tier one plus. And I, I haven't been a teacher for 20 years. I understand, you know. I think that we're at a point where we have gotten really good at the tiered systems of support, to the point where math really isn't taught at the elementary level whole class anymore. It's a mini lesson and it's rotations. And teachers are getting really good at the rotation model. And I think that, and I applaud them for this. They're, they're kind of like, what's next? What, what can we do next? It's hard work, but it's good work. So I think what I'll, you know, I think what I need to do is to go back to the teachers and ask them, you know, we're already doing great things. If you could have one thing that would help to make your work in thinking about, you know, working with students who have already mastered things, what would it be? I think that would be pretty telling. I trust teachers. I trust the teachers implicitly. I am so honored and so lucky to work with them. And I just think that it's kind of a decision we make together. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is, do you have anything else for your report?
Just one thing in your packets or in the folder. We do have a new middle school art teacher, part-time. Deanna Deegan, our previous middle school art teacher, got a full-time job and couldn't, couldn't stay with us as a .5 art teacher. But we are very happy to welcome Deanna Deegan, who comes to us with a Bachelor of Arts from Framingham State University. She's been a long-term substitute in art at Blackstone Millville Regional School District. She's taught in the Shrewsbury Summer School Program, has been a student-teacher in Hudson and at my own daughter's school at Misco Hill in Mendon, Mendon Upton. And she has a passion for middle schoolers. So that really, her enthusiasm came through in her demonstration lesson when Maureen and the teachers interviewed her and had her do a demo lesson. She connects very well with students and we're excited to welcome her.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to the chairman's report. Couple of these, we, they're just on there as placeholders, the strategic planning. I think we're, one of our first meetings where we're going to be answering some of the questions that we addressed, I think, is coming up with athletics, correct? Is that on the 19th?
On the 20th.
On the 20th. Other than that, we're going to slowly start to schedule those meetings and go after some of the cost centers and major units within the district and go through the, start to try to answer the questions and connect the dots. That will connect us to the FY '20 budget process. Nothing, actually, there is something new. Although I was on the Pike, Terry did present a framework for a sheet that I think will incorporate the total cost of a building or a total cost of a cost center. And because it was raining and you shouldn't be reading Excel spreadsheets on the Pike. I haven't looked at it yet, but I will look at it tomorrow. And so the process of kind of setting up how we're going to look at the FY '20 budget process has begun. Thank you. I'll do the extended day annex next. And then lastly, most of the results are in on the parent's side of the standard-based grading survey. There are clearly, is, there is a need for a discussion at a later date. The superintendent has asked for some additional time to analyze the data more, both the quantitative data, the qualitative data, and also to bring in, they're doing a survey of, as referenced in the presentation, a pair, a student survey and a teacher survey. The one thing that I think the committee would like is keep the, let's not put the results together. We can look at it as a whole, but let's keep each of those results in those buckets separately. Did you have something, Denise?
Just a quick question. I think you might have answered it in your earlier statement. So are we also doing a teacher survey as well?
Yes. Yeah, I believe so. Or, I know it's been discussed at faculty meetings.
We can discuss later. We don't have to.
There's certainly a lot of teacher input.
Yeah, the only one I was asking is actually, as the initial survey email went out to middle school parents, I actually got a fair amount, surprisingly enough, of questions saying, because it said that we were surveying the stakeholders. So people were asking who the stakeholders were. And some people specifically asked, are we surveying the teachers? Because they are, because they're a stakeholder in the process.
I, I think we should let the superintendent and Maureen have a conversation. But I think if at all possible, or even some teachers, some feedback from some teachers could be helpful.
I think there has been a lot of, starting, you know, when we, many years ago, a lot of teacher input. But last year, looking at it, looking at how, you know, how we can improve communication, et cetera. Teachers have been an integral part of the process, as has been the school site council. So that has both teachers and parents on it.
Okay, and then, so we'll, we'll talk about scheduling that at a near-future date.
Right, and we're hopeful that we'll get a higher response rate, especially this week with parent conferences happening because currently, we still only have, I think it was 36 or 39%, around that range of respondents. So, so for parents who might be watching at home, it is, we'll, we can send it out again. It is posted on the website. It's on the Facebook page for the middle school. And we encourage as much input as possible.
And then lastly, under my report is the extended day annex. Mr. Wiggins, Mr. Angler and Mr. Wiggins, could you? John, you were hiding back there. That's not going to, that's not going to work.
No, we're not.
So at a previous meeting, we had a discussion around the extended day annex and what to do on the last day of school when they start to dismantle the building. What are we going to do with the annex? There was some discussion, initial, the initial discussion was what should we do at all? Should we bring that, the annex over to the middle school, high school to give us some more space? We had some questions to be answered. And so now what we're getting is the moving of the annex. There's effectively three options in front of you in a memo. One is to store the annex for a year. Storing it off-site on blocks leveled for one year is $67,000 to put something on storage. That's a lot of money. Option two is to move the annex to the middle school for use. I will let Mr. Wiggins, Mr. Angler kind of talk through it. There's a cost and I will, a very crude estimate of a cost of anywhere from 80 to $120,000. And then the third option is to turn the annex to the DPW for them to use at the DPW. So we do not have to make a decision tonight. We can't keep on kicking the can down, but we should be making a decision in early January on what we're going to do because this is part of the planning process. So I would preface this conversation as we have to decide, do we want, do we want the annex to come over here? And if we do have the annex to come over here, is it, and is, what's the useful life of the annex? What are the costs going to be, not just of the moving of it? But it's, I, I believe it's somewhere from 15 to 16 years old, maybe even older. I don't know. No, I think it was a 15-year note.
It was done during, the previous superintendent, Peter Sanquioni, was here for three years prior to me. So that was 13, between 13 and 10 years ago. And that's when it was purchased and set up.
It's been more than 10.
Maybe 12, I would guess, 12 years.
12 is the number that I keep hearing bandied about.
Okay. So it's a question of what's the useful life of that? What are we going to do with it here? And what impact are we going to have here? Not just on what little space we have. And the bigger question is what exactly are we going to do in the annex, right? It's just one thing is, there's going to be a cost. Is it, is it classrooms? Is it one classroom? Is it two classrooms? Is it administrative offices? What, what exactly? Because, once again, the numbers being crude, 80 to $120,000 is a significant amount of money. And I know we, you know, part of the conversation last time was we don't want to lose space. But let's just, let's pick just for now, 100 grand. That is a significant amount of money that we just don't have in our budget. We have needs, pressing needs that were, you know, just some needs came up tonight. So we have to obviously balance things. So that's just a preface to the conversation. Do you guys have any, or maybe it's for the superintendent. What is the thought on the use of the space first? We could put the conversation of the cost and how long we have, that we can expect it to live.
Well, I'll let John maybe address what he thinks the useful life will be. As far as the use, I think everything I'd heard from, from certainly, you know, Bob, and I think maybe to a lesser degree, Maureen. I don't know that Maureen and I discussed it as much, but certainly from Bob and from Nancy was that we'd clearly be looking at it as classroom space. And I think that when we figured it out, that if we were to move this over on-site, that basically we would get to a situation where I believe everybody would have a room. Right now, even with the movement of the fifth grade, there will still be some teachers who will not have a room. And the advantage of moving the annex over here was that every teacher would have a room. Obviously, some would be in the annex.
So how many extra rooms are we thinking in that annex? Two to three?
There are currently three rooms. It's divided into three classrooms currently. So it could be left.
But they're not the traditional-sized classroom, right?
I'm not sure the exact dimensions.
Yeah, but that one we were in the other night, and one of the rooms in the annex is probably about the same size. If you take out all the stuff that they do for the extended day, if we were to take, you know, all the smaller children things out, I would say, at a minimum, two of them are probably as big as that room a couple down the hall.
I've only glanced at it from the outside. I would speculate it's actually what is considered a double-wide. So it's probably two traditional classrooms. That doesn't mean it has to be configured as two traditional classrooms.
Yeah, there's one that's probably tiny.
So.
The first room, the front room.
Yeah, exactly. That one's smaller. Yeah, that one's.
So it depends on how you configure it and what you configure.
So it looks like we could potentially get two classrooms out of it?
Easily, I think, two and potentially, potentially three.
And some of the, some of the.
You're thinking of three?
You have three there. I'm not sure which ones you guys are talking about, the small one, the first one.
The first one on the right. So if you come in the parking lot entrance.
All trailers are the same size. So when they came in, there's six units. They're all on the same flatbed. So, you know, so I would think that the.
So maybe it's just the way that the room is configured right now that it seems smaller, which could be because they have it split with cubbies as you first go in, which they don't have in the other ones. And they have like big fridges because it's with the younger students. So that, yeah, that's very maybe.
Once you repurpose it for, you know, a high school classroom where you're not going to have some of that stuff, you know, that, that expands the room right there. And again, as I say, it's typically, and again, I haven't gone actually inside it. I've really kind of more been on the outside and looking at it. It's easily what's considered a double and it may be a big double. So when John says he thinks he can get three classrooms out of it, I tend to agree.
And some of the, of course, this is all to be fleshed out a little bit further. But some of the potential uses are because we're focusing on expanding opportunities in STEM and STEAM, very hands-on, project-based engineering. You see what's happening in the Unified Arts STEAM program upstairs in the middle school where they're building and coding, programming the video games. Now we have four or five video games. We could have our own arcade here. Now we have four or five video games, we could have our own arcade here, but it's the type of real-world, project-based, hands-on, actual building projects that we envision, and it would be perhaps a perfect place for that type of activity to be going in.
I don't think we're questioning that we need space, and I don't think we're questioning that we're busting at the seams in this building, it's just that a $100,000 price tag, is that to move it, to hook it up, to turn the key and move in?
And I would say, one of the things we were talking about late today, and I would commend the superintendent for bringing it to our attention, we initially thought that we would be able to bring it over and not have water hooked up. Because I was thinking, and I think still rightly so, we don't necessarily have to have the bathrooms hooked up in this, because our access to bathrooms in any of the locations we've talked about would be close enough, it's not a problem. However, the building does have sprinklers. And so to that degree, while we would not necessarily have to have sewer hooked up, we would still have to hook up water to activate the sprinklers. So in one sense, that actually ironically may save some money on vestibules, but it will add some money on the plumbing side, so I think your $100,000 estimate is probably still a good working number.
So did we get that number from someone who works with modular units, or is this just your combined expertise?
Well, this is, this is sort of, this is sort of from Terry having put a few of these in over the years, and moved a couple over the years, but it's also, John investigated it, he's talked to a moving company, but we're actually going to, frankly, before you make a decision, for the princely sum of $250, we can get them out here, and they can actually...
You're fast-forwarding, because I think it would be important to get a company that deals strictly with modulators out, one, to tell us what, to confirm what you think is the useful life is.
Right.
And then, two, to really look at it and give us, you know, what is it going to cost to get this thing from there, over here, hooked up?
And I think, I think it's $250 well-spent, to get that information. So, John Starkey, I think, made the commitment to them.
Please do that.
I'm not exactly sure when they're coming, but it will be before, I think we're hoping that we can have more information for your next meeting.
Do we know, how much, how much do we pay for the annex? How much would it be to buy new? I don't remember, where we bought it, it was before me, I don't remember.
I would, particularly after the discussion we were having last night about police cruisers, typically you don't buy them, you lease them.
Right, and we have, and we, so I know we paid them off, we paid it off over multiple years.
These are on $350, $350,000.
Yeah. And typically, usually, because of the useful life, you typically will have an eight-to-10 year lease with a dollar buyout at the end.
And what is the useful life like?
Well, it depends on the style you get, but even the most inexpensive, even the most inexpensive ones nowadays typically have at least a 20-year useful life.
So we've already had it for 13?
Is there any, any additional work we would need to do, or does this $100,000 cover any, do we need to touch it up?
We're figuring that covers the touch-up work, like, for example, John pointed out that we would need to do some replacement of the flooring in there, that would be included in that $100,000 figure.
Is it worth looking at a lease of a new one?
We can find that information out for you.
I mean, that's a big price tag, in a short amount of time, that we have to decide, and something that only has a useful life of another seven or so years.
So the, on the option to give it to the DPW, do we know, do they want it?
Yes.
And they would incur all costs in moving it?
Well, that would certainly be my plan.
How much, and just because we're looking at all possible scenarios, how much would it be just to take it away?
Why do you want it? It could be demolished, and it'd be...
Or what, okay, that's what you would do, is they would demolish it.
Correct.
So if we decide, I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, but we're looking at all possible scenarios.
They're planning on demolishing it.
So they, that would become part of that project?
Correct.
Does that project have any money to move it over here? School Building Committee?
Hasn't even been floated yet, and I think the discussion that's happened to date is, any of the costs associated with moving it off-site would be the burden of the school, of the school district.
I think earlier conversations, when we first started, I believe that's what it was.
The demolition costs are part of the project, moving it are not part of the project.
So if we didn't take it, and DPW didn't want it, they could just demolish it?
It's zero cost to the district.
Part of the project.
Right.
So, in addition to getting the, the cost of leasing a new, leasing a new one, the other, the only thing, if this really is three full classrooms, you know, the Tetra Tech study that we had related to this building slated us for needing like five new classrooms. So to bring this, five or six.
Five, right, right.
So if we did use this, and even if it was for seven years, it gets us half of the classrooms for what will turn out to be the period of time, which we had all stated was the earliest we'd be looking at doing anything to this building.
That's correct.
So, for, yes, $100,000 is significant money, but in the grand scheme of things, it's short money to get us another seven years, and significantly impact the needs that we know exist in this building. So, I definitely want to know all the components and options in terms of, if we can lease one for the next 12 years for $50,000 a year, then maybe that's the discussion, but I think laying it out even $100,000, that has that impact, because we're not looking at doing anything for at least seven or eight years from now.
I mean, the elephant in the table here, so to speak, is if and when, and we know it's quite a while from now, but if and when, this building would be replaced.
This is building is not going to be a replacement, this building will be an addition and a renovation.
So, so if that's the case...
No, that's...
Well, let me put it this way, if there is some, if there is some...
No, go ahead.
Alternative, okay, to the current structure of this building, let's rephrase, if that's the case, then how you structure that, that gap to get there, is an important consideration. Okay? So the first thing is, obviously, you know, you're going to have that restructuring, shall we say, of the current building, okay, to use a generic term, and then, so how do you fill that gap? Okay? Do you fill it with an asset you already own, but obviously it's going to cost you to move it from one location to another, or do you fill it with a, basically, a new asset, but at the same time, you're not necessarily going to give up on the old asset, you're simply going to deed it effectively to the town, for the town to use. So it's not necessarily a losing proposition if you go that route, it's sort of a win-win for both of, in this case, the DPW and the school, if that were something that was able to be put forward.
Well, once we give it to them, it's going to be hard to get it back, so.
No, 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 but what I'm saying is, they'd have to go kind of hand-in-hand.
For a dollar.
The reality is, they don't have, the DPW doesn't have $100,000 to move this thing either, so if the DPW's going to do it, it's a warrant article to move.
So, could you, when, when the, when the company comes out, could you break down what those costs are?
Yeah, we should be able to.
Like, I know there's a moving cost, like, just rough...
Just to move it, I'm not sure if it's on there, we're looking at like $37, $38,000, just to take that, keep it within the compound of the, not going on 109, because it's extra cost going back home, so just to move it from there to here.
Is almost 40 grand.
With the site work that needs to happen to wherever we put it?
No, that's just a truck.
Just to break, now there's some more work needs to be done, as far as, of course, the property needs to be taken care of, electrical needs to be disconnected, and the units attached to it, which is the ramp and the stairway, so, but that would all be, how product would come within, within the custodial staff part of it, but just moving it and, and winter, I mean, still, still putting the plastic on the side, so before they put it back together, it's restricted $40,000.
And we have to make a decision by when?
It's in, go ahead.
They have some, we still have some time, as far as, as far as the project goes, but as far as trying to get what we want from money to fund this, I'm not pretty sure the timeframe on that, which would be...
It's not coming out of, that's just have to be a warrant article, this would be a Springtown meeting with, and we, we did okay last night, but we have a lot more stuff coming in spring.
Right, and the reason I said early January is because we're in the process right now of doing what's called transition planning, and in the meeting that we had, I think it was last week, you know, we were going through a series of things, and one of the, one of the things is that if we make the decision in January, you still need to understand that I conceivably need to have a process where I'm going out to bid, and getting back those bids, you're making a decision on who to accept that bid, and then we're making sure we line up a date, because the sequencing of whatever happens with that building, other than demolition, okay, is one week.
Yeah, I think the January timeframe that Terry put in the memo, I think, I think we should...
So let's spend the 250, let's get the people out, and come up with a breakdown of the money, and most, more important than anything is the quality and how long that's going to last.
You want to know the...
Because even though it may be seven years, what happens in three years when the roof starts to leak?
Yep.
And, you know, I mean...
Because there will be stuff that you'll need to maintain.
Now we've, now we've spent 100 grand on something that is not going to make it.
That you can purchase new for 300, not that I'm saying that, that one-third of the purchase price.
We were both, we were both assess the current, we'll get that, we'll get the company out, we'll get all that information for you on the, on the current annex, but we'll also contact, I, and John and I will talk, but I think we'll both probably be thinking about the same company, that we can get out here and we can have them look at potential sites, and tell us how much it would cost to put in, you know, a double-wide classroom, and it would be effectively the same size new, and all of the installation, whatever cost.
So the last question, so if you put it in this courtyard, what impact is that going to have in the courtyard?
I personally wasn't thinking courtyard, but...
It was what, in the patio or garden area behind the school?
That was the third option we had.
Well, okay, what option were you thinking?
Personally, I was thinking outside, what you call the sunroom, which is the far end of this building, door seven.
What impact would that have?
I don't think, taking down a couple trees, it wouldn't affect any parking, I don't think. I stepped it off tonight, but I haven't stepped it off over there yet. When I originally came here, there was discussion about going outside of door six, which is, you go past the circle, the bus drop-off, and it's that grass, it's affecting some. So those were the two options, and then, and then there was discussion...
So, the options right now, nothing impacting, no parking at all, right?
Should not, correct.
Okay. And some trees may have to come down.
It might be, definitely at the sunroom.
After the bus loop, there.
And then the door six.
Might be a tree.
And then last question, does it have any impact on kind of those classrooms that are the butts? Is it going to impact the airflow? Is it going to impact the comfort in those classrooms? I mean, we're hearing complaints about...
On door six, on door six, off door six, would it have any impact on classrooms? Yes.
Okay, that's just another, another thing to add to the list.
So what's door seven?
Uh, the, it's the end of this wing, so as you come around the bus loop?
Yep.
The end of that building?
Yep.
Right there. It's, you go out that, that's the...
So like, where the trees? So like those trees that...
Correct, it's a triangle area where there's trees.
Where it comes out, so where this parking lot and the...
Yes.
And the road meet.
Correct.
It'd be that area.
So as you go up that ramp, we have the, the disabled ramp that goes up to door seven.
And door six, you more...
It's past the bus loop, it's further down, so it's going to be in front of those classes, so if you...
Right, it's going to be on, it's going to be this way, further this way from...
Yeah, 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 yep.
So when you're looking out the window to the classrooms, you'll be looking at the trailer?
Yeah.
And I would think there would have to be some sort of spacing as well.
Yeah, right. Similar to the way that it is over at Clyde Brown today.
The views one thing, but the ability to get fresh air, you know, like really, sometimes a little wind can help, so.
At Clyde Brown today, it has that same setup, where there's 10, 12 feet in between the bill, the wing of the building.
What's there at the Clyde Brown?
It's all the K rooms. So there's about 10 or 12 feet between that K, pre-K rooms, and then the annex is there, so. We're replicating what we have.
What, 10 or 12 feet in between?
I think it'd be five or four or five feet.
Oh boy.
Yeah.
Before you're into the road.
Before you get to the road.
It, it is the tighter of the two locations, but it would also be the better of the two locations, frankly.
Right, because if you come off of there, how much room do you have there before you hit the, before you hit where it, where the roads meet?
And that's why I stepped off, so it would be very tight, but at the same point, you have six trailers, two are in units, and the four in the middle don't have ants, they have open, they have the open sides. So again, you can look at making these six units into four units, or making these four units into two units, so, you know, so you still have...
Got it. A little room to play with?
And if you're, and of course, if you're getting new, the company you bring in here, we can, we can have them look at both locations, and they can actually design what they're doing for where you want to put it.
And I understand the new, old concept, but we're also, it's one thing to take what we have, and it's paid off, it's another thing to then start looking at new with the cost.
I think the only reason why I brought that up...
No, I understand why you're...
...is significant cost, if leasing something is more economical than trying to fund a 13-year-old trailer?
I get it, I know exactly what you're saying, but I'm saying, we can't, the train's not leaving, the train's leaving the station, because that, we have to make a decision in less than a month and a half on what we do with that existing unit. If it does become leasing is more, or new is the better way to go, we have some more time, because then that can be ripped down, and then we can figure that out, and have them talk with the capital planning committee, and really lay it out, so.
Well, yeah, and if we, if we worked in something where you had something, maybe it is somewhat significant, but we're leasing something, and it's a warrant article that says DPW is allowing $100,000, if we get a lease payment?
Yeah, so the, what we have to decide is...
We got to look at all the options.
We got to look at all the options. You guys, sorry, a lot more homework.
That's okay. We love homework.
The new trailer won't impact the Mr. Hoops.
Speaking for both of you there, John, you got anything to say about that?
I didn't look over to see it as well.
The Mr. Hoops things won't have to come down, correct? Oh, never mind, we'll talk about that another time, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, 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 for all of us.
We could just make it an ice skating rink, John, that's fine.
Let me just say one...
You're going to buy one, I'm going to buy one.
If I get a chance, I would investigate on the side. We talk about leasing as it's only an option for something that is new. I will, and I grant you that the roof I did at the time was new, but I will remind the committee of my past history of leasing just about anything I could, if the, if that was the cheapest way to finance, including a roof at one time. So it is possible that we could lease the move, I will look into it. And now you're not talking $100,000, you're talking, you know, $40,000 a year, perhaps, over three years.
That makes a lot more sense.
That's interesting.
That makes a lot more sense.
Let's see the quality of the building first, that's, that's a big piece.
We agree with you.
Right, right, same thing, yeah. I am, yeah, totally. I'm going to have a hard time letting that thing go.
Sure. Good, excellent, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, subcommittee reports, school building.
I don't have anything more to add, other than everything that's been said tonight.
You need to find us money for that annex.
I don't know, I really like Terry's lease option, so I'm going to bank on that one. that one.
Do you want to speak, we do have one thing on, we're currently doing, and teachers are assisting with inventorying everything we have and raiding the furniture, and then the collaborative buying, purchasing option Terry and Jen Littlefield have been working on with Jason about whether the, we are able to go in with any other districts to do collaborative purchasing of furniture, so.
Yeah, and I think the short story there is that there's some furniture that we feel very clearly will be able to participate with the collaborative purchasing process. There are other things where, quite frankly, we looked at what our preference was, for example, with a student chair, which was a Columbia chair, and everybody else in this collaboration wants to go with a chair that's a very nice chair, but even if we go alone and everybody else buys this other chair collaboratively, we'll still save approximately $10,000 going alone. And so, as I put it to the building authority, that, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility both to Milis, but also to the building authority, to get something that we both want and is educationally sound, but also is obviously going to be economically feasible. So we've delivered what our recommendations are to the, the building authority for them as part of this collaborative effort, and so I suspect that probably will be sort of a mix. Some stuff we'll buy collaboratively, other things we will probably go out on our own.
Have you ever leased a chair?
Actually...
Don't! I want everything leased in that new building. Thanks, Terry. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
You're just...
No, nothing from the elementary school buildings? The building's still going up?
Okay.
Yes, the building is still going up.
Correspondence, several Milis-Medway articles?
Yes, and I realize you get those at home.
You certainly do.
And, but I did want to mention that Danielle Mannion has been honored as the new president of the Boston New England chapter of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. And through her connections, our students are able to do work with the Emmy, Student Emmy Awards, and produce a lot of the, a lot of great video through her involvement with that. So that one, and a couple of, one article, wonderful article, on the girls' volleyball team that made it to tournament and fell to the number one seed, Whitemanville Christian. The Milis Hall of Fame has inducted five to the Sports Hall of Fame, and Milis Volleyball for a Cure raised over $4,000 for trying to prevent breast cancer.
Milis Medway News does a good job with the local coverage. They, they really, they really do. They spend a lot of time both in the Medway schools and our schools, so Judy and her team does a really good job. Do we have any announcements? Any announcements on your end, not over here?